Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Beaver Creek City Council for January 22nd. I'll call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Litteral.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz. Vice Mayor Garcia, or Vice Mayor Bales, I'm so sorry.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Do I have a motion?
Motion to excuse Councilmember Schwartz.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Schwartz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And I'll turn it over to Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'd all rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This recent Saturday, I was privileged to be in a meeting where fellow councilmember Glenn Doer spoke concerning the Middle East and the difficulties there. And I think it would just deserve time to just have a moment of silence, again praying for peace in that section of the world.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us and we need to make an amendment to that.
I move to amend the agenda to remove a pre-scheduled speaker.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Then I need a motion to approve the amendment.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Public hearing, PC 24-1.
Ordinance 24-3, an ordinance amending Chapter 158, making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code in accordance with Chapter 158.175.
Staff, have a presentation? Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This round of proposed zoning code changes was, it was something that was initiated by the legal department, something over the sign code. So I wanted to really let them do the presentation since it's predominantly signs. Sarah Sparks from Coles Walls here to do the presentation, so I'll let her come up and give you the meat of what's going on this evening. But this went through Planning Commission. Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed changes. I know that there's one slight amendment from that meeting, but Ms. Sparks will get further into that detail. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. It's good to be here presenting the sign code. My colleague, Mr. McHugh, could not be here tonight, so I'm, hopefully we'll do this presentation justice without his expertise here. But really, I'm not going to go into a ton of detail, but I do want to give you some sort of legal background on why we're doing this. So I'm going to start with the Reed versus Gilbert decision. Some of you may be aware of this, but it's a United States Supreme Court decision from 2015 involving the town of Gilbert, Arizona. Before that case, it was very common for cities to categorize signs by, or categorize signs into certain areas like real estate signs, yard signs, political signs. So think of it as a very well-organized closet where you have everything neatly packed away in its rightful section. However, Justice Thomas in Reed versus Gilbert said that was content-based regulation. You can't do that. Town of Gilbert had a lot of categories of signs, and they were regulating signs differently based on those categories. And Justice Thomas said that you could not do that. These types of regulations are unconstitutional. However, as the Supreme Court is known to do, their opinions can be confusing. And so that Gilbert decision was confusing, and it was really difficult for cities to apply it in their sign codes. And cities struggled with it since 2015 on how can we regulate signs? What does the Gilbert decision mean? And so we, the legal team here, took a look at the Beaver Creek sign code and made some changes, not only based on the Reed versus Gilbert decision, but on some subsequent decisions that I'll discuss here in a moment. So the biggest thing that we do know cities can do is we can distinguish between commercial and non-commercial signs. Prior to these amendments, the Beaver Creek sign code seemed to be more geared towards commercial regulation of signs, but it didn't really say that. And so we made sure to distinguish within the code, commercial versus non-commercial. And ultimately, what we want to do is we want to stand up to constitutional challenges because we know that when it comes to non-commercial signs, so the signs that somebody wants to put in their yard, that is protected by the First Amendment, and we want to make sure that we align with those protections. So let's start with what the city cannot do. Again, the city cannot regulate signs based on content. The city cannot limit the number of temporary non-commercial signs. This actually goes back to an old federal circuit case where the city of Arlington, Virginia, had a limit on temporary signs. You could only have two. And the federal court said that really limits people's ability to express an opinion. Sometimes you can't get it all out and just maybe one or two signs. So they said limiting the number of signs was unconstitutional as it related to non-commercial signs. You also cannot limit the amount of time that a temporary non-commercial sign can be displayed. This goes back to an Ohio Supreme Court case out of the city of Painesville. In that case, I don't remember the exact time limit, but they had this section of their sign code about political signs, and you could only have a political sign out so, for like so many days after a, an election. The court said you can't do that. Now, the court did not provide a reasonable amount of time, but they just said you really can't limit the amount of time a sign can be displayed after an election because sometimes, even not thinking about elections, think about political statements about war. I mean, sometimes wars can go on for a very long time. So if you have a sign out, you should be able to keep it in your yard for as long as you would like to, essentially. But what can cities do? So since the Reed versus Gilbert decision, the United States Supreme Court released the Austin decision. In that decision, the city of Austin banned new off-premise signs. So essentially, the city of Austin said, we have too many billboards, we want to ban them. And instead of calling the billboards, they referred to them as off-premise signs. This case made it all the way up to the United States Supreme Court where the Supreme Court said you can distinguish between on and off-premise signs. For one thing, it related to commercial speech, which we know cities can regulate commercial speech differently and more stringent than they can non-commercial speech. And the court kind of clarified the Reed decision when it said, you know, distinguishing between on and off-premise signs, that's not a content-based distinction. An off-premise sign would be like a billboard. It advertises something on a piece of property where that thing that it's advertising is not located. So a giant billboard could advertise McDonald's in a field somewhere. Well, there's not a McDonald's there, so that would be an off-premise sign. An on-premise sign would be the McDonald's sign on the McDonald's property. And so Austin, or the United States Supreme Court said, Austin, yes, you can ban off-premise signs. One thing that we could do is permit sponsorship signs at sports facilities. Banning off-premise signs could have the unintended effect of getting rid of the Little League sponsorship. So if a company, a local business, somebody wants to sponsor Little League or any other type of like sporting event, typically you will see their advertising signs at the ball field or the playing field of where the, whatever it is that they're sponsoring. Technically, that would be an off-premise sign, but because of the limited purpose of the sponsorship and the fact that the business is, you know, giving money, charitable donation to the Little League team, for example, we can carve out an exception for that. Another thing that cities can do is ban signs from the right-of-way. This has been a well-established precedent for a long time, since the early 80s. The right-of-way is city property. You can control signs whether you want them in the right-of-way or not. Typically, cities ban them, so again, you can't have signs in the sidewalk, blocking a sidewalk or blocking the view of a stop sign or something like that. So you can ban those things. You can also regulate the placement of signs. This also goes back to an old Supreme Court case that dealt with commercial signs, and it basically said you can control the time, manner, and place of speech. And again, you can control signs not being in the right-of-way. So I'm going to highlight some of the changes that we made. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but I do want to mention that since the Planning Commission presentation, we have made an amendment to the sign code that I want to talk about. It has to do with the definition of a sign. So we clarified the definition of a sign by including certain things that are not signs. We received some questions on what is a work of art? Because we, the city, you know, cannot consider works of art to be signs. We don't want to be regulating works of art because they are protected by the First Amendment. So we have added a definition of what a work of art is for the purposes of the sign code. And really just want to clarify and help understand what a work of art is considered and that it is not a sign and is not regulated by the sign code. So we are asking that this definition be included, and it would be an amendment to the ordinance. And really, this is just a clarifying amendment. It would not be a substantial amendment. The next thing I want to touch on is we have added some prohibited signs. As in the city of Austin, we know cities can now ban off-premise signs and billboards, and so that is what we have done in the Beaver Creek sign code. We also added dangerous and/or defective signs. They've always been banned or prohibited, but we just wanted to specifically state that. Again, I think I mentioned earlier, prior to these changes, the city of Beaver Creek sign code didn't really distinguish between commercial and non-commercial. It seemed as though it was regulated towards commercial, but we really wanted to make sure that we stated that. So we took out certain sections that, it's kind of hard to see with the yellow text, but we took out the section that regulated election signs because, again, we really want to stay away from regulating political signs. So we took out that section, and then we added a few things on temporary non-commercial signs. So, you know, they, you know, they can't be illuminated, so you don't want somebody to have a sign in their yard that is so bright it's disturbing everyone, and they cannot be displayed in the right-of-way. Again, this just highlights that we, you'll notice we've added the word "commercial" a lot in the sign code, and that is really just to be clear that a lot of these regulations in the zoning districts, they pertain to commercial signs. Because, again, cities can regulate commercial signs a little bit more heavily than they can non-commercial signs. And again, another thing I wanted to point out, too, is we took a really close look at how signs were being regulated in residential districts, and we noticed that only one temporary ground sign was allowed in a residential, in a residential property. Now, it said it was for residential uses. That term isn't defined anywhere in the code, and we just thought it would be better to just remove that section. And then this is the sports facility sponsorship, sponsorship sign section that we added. And again, we did not want to have the unintended effect of having to get rid of or not allowing any kind of sponsorship at a sports facility. So if somebody wants to sponsor the soccer team, you know, the city wants to be able to allow those signs, and we want to encourage that. So we really just added this section to make sure, to carve out a little exception for the off-premise sign ban. And that is really all I had. I mean, there were a lot of other changes in there. Many of them were not very substantive, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, this is a public hearing, so if there's any input from the public first, then we'll get to council.
Sure.
So if anyone out there has anything they would like to say in this regard, step forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, I'll close the public part of it, and now we'll go to council. Questions, Councilman Litteral?
Yes, I do have a, just a couple of quick questions regarding the, the first was in the one section that you showed. It was a portion of that. It was 158.150.
Go back to that. 158, this one?
.150. It specifically had to do with the, the part where you were describing, I guess, maximum size. I had a question about that.
Sure.
It said, and I'm assuming this is residential, right? It says "commercial" in residential district?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I guess my question is, it said a half a foot per foot of, every one foot of frontage.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanted to see, how would that be broken down? And then is there any circumstance to where somebody would actually have a situation where they could have a, I mean, 60, that's a 30, that's a 30-square-foot sign, if I'm not, if I'm doing my math right? Right?
And are you talking about the permanent ground signs?
Yeah.
Yes, and that is where we changed, the sign shall not exceed 30 square feet.
Yeah.
I think that would be, I think it would mostly apply to maybe a commercial business that's within a residential district. It would probably apply to that sign. Or to a, an apartment complex, having a sign outside advertising the apartment complex.
I do know ground signs, it's, I believe it's five, five feet maximum height, I believe is right? So that would be, what, a 12-foot-long sign or something, I guess? It just seemed really large to me, in my mind, for a 60-foot frontage, to me. I don't know if that's, if that's a standard that we just use or always used, or if that's something, if that's something new.
I believe that's kind of a standard size. I'll defer to staff on that one.
Yes, Sarah's right. When you got a new neighborhood and they have their residential ground signs, they want to advertise the name of the sign, apartment complexes. There are some non-conforming commercial businesses in R1A lots that, they've just been there as a business forever, and it's been zoned that way. So it's kind of a, it's not a neat, you got to fit them in a box somewhere to give them some regulation, otherwise with no regulation, then the imagination is the limitation.
Okay. I just was curious if it was like a standard that was kind of already set up?
Yeah, I mean, that's a standard we've used, and it hasn't been an issue.
All right, all right. And the one other question I did have, it's probably, we said we was going to define art in a way, is, I know of a lot of art that could be considered by many obscene. Is there a way to include verbiage to eliminate obscenities? I could easily hang a picture of something that you may not think is appropriate.
Yes. And there is a legal definition of what something obscene is. It is a very long, convoluted definition, but it actually, part of that definition, it has a standard in there that says something to the effect of if something, something is obscene, if it does not convey a educational or artistic type of message. And so I think one justice in the Supreme Court has said, if something is obscene, you'll know it when you see it, kind of thing. So those are, obscenity is illegal, and the city can ban those. Now, we could add a definition of obscenity into the code, and I do believe the, I think the sign code, do we prohibit, double check. We could even add a specific section to ban them, but they are really inherently illegal.
Yeah, I just didn't know if, I know somebody could easily read that as...
I see what you mean.
I don't know if there's a way to just add even the code line to that definition per whatever you said the, the legal definition is, just per this code, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
In addition to our, our art definition, something like that.
I think that's possible. I mean, we could add something really to, either to the work of art or just add a definition of obscenity and say that obscene signs are prohibited.
Per code, federal code. Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilman Kern?
Question more for Randy. Randy, what's the cost differential between an attached sign and one that's unattached in Beaver Creek? Just curious, I realize, this is kind of a...
Are you talking about the permit for...
If an individual has a, has a store and they want to actually attach the sign rather than having a hanging sign, is there a difference in cost here?
No, I mean, the sign permit's the same.
All right. Just the permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if they attach it to the wall, typically they want to have interior lighting or the lighting inside the sign, so it's backlighted, and that costs more for them, but it's the same permit price for us.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Garcia?
Yeah, I think I would just like to add on that I also would like to see something about obscenities being banned because I do agree that people can take the freedom of speech with artwork a little too far at times, and they will battle what they feel is not obscene with what other people may find objectively offensive or obscene. So if we could put something in there, I would appreciate that. I think otherwise, this, this all makes sense, and I appreciate you standing in, and Mr. McHugh's had to put this together for us.
Thank you.
Councilman Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to add other than I agree with the issue of obscenity, to consider it. I will say thank you for your presentation. Tangential to this discussion, I would like us to revisit the definition of expressway, highway, and throughway in tandem with the digital billboards at a later date, so it's not relative to today, but it's something to consider. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Bales?
Sarah, could you go back to your last slide about the sports facility signage?
Yes.
My question is, could you, could you please explain why it needs to be oriented toward the field of play and the one side versus two sides?
Mm-hmm. So we added that, one, to sort of curtail visual clutter. So if there is a lot of billboards along, let's say, the side of a fence in a baseball field, all those signs will be oriented towards the field. The, the people in the stands will be able to see them, but if it's in a park, you know, you won't see those signs as you're walking in the park if you're not in the field. So we kind of thought that that would help deter the visual clutter, and it would also go into, or it would align with the purpose of the sponsorship sign, which it is specifically for, you know, allowing companies to donate or provide support to teams. If we allowed both sides, both sides to where it could be visible from outside the playing field or the facility, that could also go into an off-premise sign, and then we would kind of be contradicting the ban on off-premise signs.
Couldn't we make the argument, though, that the benefit of that particular sign hanging on that particular fence is for the baseball organization? And that could be the line that we draw on the sand? The only reason I'm bringing this up is we're going to have a huge problem at Rotary Park at Lefty McFadden Fields. When you walk into that complex, the outfield's fencing, the baseline fencing faces the sidewalk as you walk up, and they've got their little sponsors everywhere.
So signs that are already there would be sort of grandfathered in, they would be considered non-conforming?
Even if they change content annually because new sponsors come in and old sponsors leave?
Well, those, if they change content, then they would not be non-conforming anymore. So those, the new, this new regulation would apply to them.
So that's another impossible issue for the city to regulate. The other thing, too, is their parking lot surrounds the fields, so I can understand why they put their sponsors on both sides of the fence. It just makes sense. So how are we going to police this?
Well, one option we could do is change it to two-sided, but I mean, I think the policing part is part of staff and how they would want to handle that.
I'm just trying to be practical.
Right.
Well, for signs that are in actual parks, on public property like that, there's really no permit required for those signs. So it'll be really the Parks Department determining whether or not the sign fits the code. And I mean, it won't be policed by the zoning department, the code enforcement, so it's whether the city wants to adhere to its own regulations. I know that's kind of a gray area, but that's...
I don't have any other questions.
I tend to agree with the obscenity part. I'd like to see that put in there. As we move forward, I know this is a first reading. We have to amend this ordinance to address the definition, but now we have, now we're actually amending the definition. What would we want to do on that?
So right now... I think, so I want to talk about obscenity a little bit. So by definition, work and art, of art doesn't include anything that would be obscene. To define obscenity is quite difficult. The Supreme Court spent years trying to define obscenity, and what Sarah mentioned was, you know, one of the justices, and she was not paraphrasing, one of them said, "I know it when I see it." So I think it would be very difficult for us to write an articulate definition of what obscenity is. Obscenity is not saying F-something. You can do that. That's, obscenity deals with the prurient interest in sex.
Contemporary community standard.
Very narrowly tailored. It has to be related to sex. And the Supreme Court case law is very detailed about how to determine that, and I, we can make that amendment, but I think it would be very difficult, and I would tend to say not necessary.
Is there anything with offensive? I mean, you say, you know...
You can be as offensive as you want, and it's protected speech.
Okay. So if we did want to use something with obscenities, having not read the entire Supreme Court opinion, is there a way we could say something along the lines of as defined by the United States Supreme Court or as recognized by the US Supreme Court to make it easier on what we're writing? Because ultimately, no matter what we say, it's going to come down to precedent anyway, and it's already been established. And you know when you see it is one thing, but I may see it and somebody else may not.
I mean, it's...
And it's not, I mean...
It's been a long time since I've read that case law, Sarah, on the obscenity. Do you...
I mean, the law hasn't changed. I believe it's, it's, I refer to it as the Miller case, and I can't remember what year that's from, but it, I mean, the definition has been around for quite some time now. And, you know, as Josh said, most, almost all of the cases of obscenity, obscenity deal with pornography. And so that's really where that definition comes from. It stems from how courts were dealing with cities' regulation of pornography. Now, it can trickle into sign codes because we all know signs are, you know, it's an, signs can be an expression, they can convey messages. So if people, you know, want to convey something that is obscene in a sign, the city could prohibit that, but it would have to be something pornographic and not have any type of, you know, artistic, educational value.
So what about messages of violence if it's in artistic form as opposed, it's still free speech? We're still saying it's protected or free speech?
It's protected free speech.
It's protected free speech.
Okay. Yes.
We will say it, Mayor sees it and recognizes it.
Yeah, that was my question, because I've heard all these things about Supreme Court trying to define it, and I watched some of those hearings, and they could not do it. And so I don't know how we can put it into this to make it work, but we need to have some safeguard in my mind to make sure that that doesn't happen. If you think this is good enough, then we don't have to amend it, but I guess I'm leaning on the legal opinion here, so.
I mean, I think it is possible to put what the legal definition of obscenity is, and I've seen many sign codes where it just says obscene signs are prohibited. You know, it doesn't, you know, we don't have to go into a long explanation as to why, but we could provide the legal definition. It could change, and if it does, we'll amend the sign code. But that definition has been well-established for a very long time.
And I think that would be an easy solution if you just say, you know, obscene signs are prohibited, period. Obscenity has been so well-defined by the Supreme Court, we don't need to include a definition of what that means, I think, within the code.
Would it be under the clause of what we're considering art? I guess that's where I think that you'll come into the grounds where people will say, "This is my artistic expression, and it's not obscene." And that's why I felt like it needed to kind of almost be there.
And that is a lot of what the defense, like, the arguments are in front of the Supreme Court. This is a work of art, this is, and it boils down to the definition of obscenity and whether obscenity is not protected speech, is not a work of art. You can make that argument, but that's for the court to decide. And if it falls across the line into obscenity, it's not protected.
And I'll also just add, too, part of the legal definition of obscenity, it has to do with the community's standard, because I think the Supreme Court has recognized every community is different. So what may be obscene in Beaver Creek, Ohio, may not be obscene in San Francisco. So, I mean, it may, I think we can take that into consideration, so I think, you know, have no problem adding prohibition on obscene signs.
Then can we make an amendment to the amendment tonight, or does that have to be done?
I wouldn't consider that a major change, adding one line that says obscene signs are prohibited. I don't know where we would stick that in there specifically, but I think that can be changed without having to do another public hearing.
Okay. We'd have to, two separate amendments then?
That would be two separate amendments.
Okay. Any other input? I'll entertain a motion to do the First Amendment, which is the explanation for the work of art.
Move to amend the ordinance 24-3 by adding a definition of a work of art, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now, I'll entertain a motion to add the obscenity part to that amendment.
I move to have a motion to add the obscenity section.
So that it would be to prohibit...
Prohibit obscenity, yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, I'll entertain a motion to, make a motion to move this ordinance to a second reading.
Move to move amended ordinance 24-3 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move this to the second reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Very good. We'll move that to the second reading. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 24-1.
Ordinance 24-1, an ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning approximately 46.864 acres of land from A1 agricultural to R PUD residential planned unit development located on the north side of Swigert Road, approximately 800 feet east of the intersection of Swigert Road and Darst Road, and further described as Book 3, Page 24, Parcel 1 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Is this a second reading? Is there any input from staff? More? Nothing changed? All right, counsel. Councilman Garcia.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance...
No, just...
Oh, sorry, go ahead, please. I was looking at...
Any questions?
No, I'm good, sorry.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Doer?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
Just thank you again to all that showed up last week, really valuable input. I look forward to hearing more. Thank you to the developer for providing plans even ahead of time. That really is a step that wasn't necessary, but is very helpful in our case. And simply a recommendation to consider widening the streets to make adequate space for emergency vehicles to traverse through. In some parts of the city, it can be a challenge at times, and there are minimums under the requirement, but to consider just a little more space is what I'll say as a recommendation. So, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Kirk?
Anything, Your Honor?
Councilman Littrell. I want to say thank you to everybody that came out. It was enlightening. It was, everybody was passionate about what they said. In this process, I've learned and I understand everybody's concerns or fears of the possibility of more traffic, of school issues, and I understand that these aren't, this is about rezoning, this isn't about traffic, this is about changing it from agricultural to residential. Grand Communities, I appreciate all the paperwork and all the graphs and everything that you've provided, and also appreciate you recognizing that Beaver Creek is, likes the idea of being spread out a little bit, not looking for three, you know, properties on a single acre, and you recognizing that and actually implementing that into your plans, and that's very much One other thing, I agree completely with Councilman Doer in streets should be as wide as possible. People in Beaver Creek park on the streets, it can cause you lots of issues, and I don't know if it's something that you can push the post office to do or not, but I would encourage you to try to get a drop box for postal mail in that neighborhood if at all possible. It'll, it'll prevent lots of headaches from vehicles parked in front of mailboxes and they can't get their mail. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Place Mayor Reels.
I have a couple of questions for the developer, if I could. This development...
Yes.
Yeah, please. We heard a ton from a million people last time, and to me, it boiled down to a couple of things. The continuity between neighborhoods wasn't quite as they'd hoped. They'd really hoped for bigger lots or kind of the same type of house. It's a good feel as you go from one neighborhood to another. And then the second was safety concerns, especially with the street. So my question is, does it make sense to reduce some of the common area in your development and increase lot size, keeping the same number of dwelling units per acre, but you've got a ton of green space? And I know that that's down the road, that's at the next step, I understand that, but as we're talking about putting a number of 2.1 dwelling units per acre in our ordinance, it's kind of appropriate to talk about it now, too. And that way, we could, or you could offer reasonably larger lots, the ones that you have along the perimeter are very nice, but reduce some of that open green space that's in the development to kind of appease some of the issues that we heard last time. But that would maintain the density that you're proposing.
I think that's definitely something that we could work through during our site plan review during the next step. I would prefer to work through that during that stage right now because, I mean, although we have a pretty dialed-in site plan right now, those perimeter sites, the border, those are all equal lot size to the adjacent neighborhoods, and then you'd find those sites that are across the street, although they're a little bit narrow, but that outer road should be pretty comparable to the adjacent neighborhoods. It's really those blue sites right there that where we get into those smaller units, but I would definitely be open to working through that during our next stage, during our site plan, working with staff and whatnot, because I think there are some areas that we could adjust that site plan to, to fix that.
And I think that, obviously, we're putting the cart before the horse, but I wanted to have a dialogue with you about that because that was a big concern, a huge concern, and, you know, if we could eliminate some green space to give you what you need still and the other adjacent neighbors feeling more comfortable about it, I think that would be great. And I'm happy to hear you're open to that conversation.
Yes, I think during the next stage, we would definitely be open to sit down because I'm not, right now, I'm not really sure what that means without looking at the dimensions of that, but also, at the next stage, we'll also be looking at stormwater easements and different easements. So usually, full disclosure, when we come in, it's usually a little bit smaller lots, and then we're, oh, we have to put these easements in, and things kind of start to grow and the lots get a little bit bigger. So, I mean, I don't like to say that, but that's really how it goes. So I think during the next stage, when we start to get a little bit more of our engineering done, I think we would definitely be open to that conversation with staff, and, you know, if, like, to sit down one-on-one with us, we'd be open to that as well.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Oh, I apologize. My name's Amanda Webb. I'm a planning and entitlement manager for Grand Communities. The address is 3940 Olympic Boulevard, Erlanger, Kentucky. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I did want to thank staff for the work that you did on density in the surrounding neighborhoods. That really helped us...
Yeah, it was a good project.
...understand one neighborhood to the other, and then also compare some of that open space in other neighborhoods compared to this. That helped me think about it a little bit more clearly. I did have a question for our attorney, because I understand that we should not deny a zoning application based upon speculation or unsubstantiated traffic-related concerns. I totally get that. But my question is, how are we supposed to know what is unsubstantiated before a traffic study has been complete?
Let's say everything is unsubstantiated until a traffic study is complete.
So doesn't that make our decision on approving or denying zoning, like, almost difficult, like, almost impossible, until this traffic study is done?
You shouldn't be considering traffic, so you consider the other factors on whether to approve it or not, just not the traffic considerations.
So, all right. So we know a traffic study is being performed.
It will be.
It will, right, and it will be. And we know also that we can't make a ruling on traffic based on unsubstantiated traffic issues.
It's full circle.
Do you see the conundrum that I'm in here? I mean, because what if, what if the study comes back and shows a substantiated problem?
So zoning is not supposed to be the way you're regulating traffic? So if there's a substantial problem with traffic caused by increased population, say, in the city, the city needs to purchase a wider easement or expand the size of the road. That's not a determining factor in zoning, though. That should have been part of the city's plan from the beginning, like, okay, this, in the city's overall plan, this development could be developed into residential properties with property sizes of whatever the density is that's in the city's design. And when roads are being developed for that particular area, those things should have been considered at that stage, what's the size of the road? And if you're doing that sort of planning in the beginning, you can make those determinations. That's what the courts say.
Right, right. So 40 years ago, we should have made North Fairfield Road 10 lanes wide, knowing the development was going to happen eventually.
I mean, so I don't know how often that plan gets updated, Randy, in terms of, but hopefully not every 40 years.
Actually, in 2024, we're going to update the thoroughfare plan, and then 2025 is a land use plan, five-year cycle.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Well, I want to thank the developer for being willing to work with us a little bit on this. First of all, I think coming up with the original, I don't want to call it a site plan because it's not really a site plan yet, but the original thoughts, because our zoning calls for three dwellings per acre, and you went down to 2.1, which is helpful a lot. And if we can work on this during the site plan process, I think it goes a long ways. So we really appreciate your willing to work with us on that, so. Anyone else? I will entertain a motion for ordinance 24-1.
I move to approve ordinance 24-1.
Aye, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Motion is carried. So, look forward to seeing you at the site plan. Okay, Resolution 24-5.
Resolution 24-5, a resolution to authorize the submittal of a funding application for trench safety grant funding through the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation.
Yes, giving mayor members of city council, staff recently became aware of a grant opportunity through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation. The grant helps assist communities in the purchase of equipment to improve the safety of workers in trenches. The maximum amount you can apply for is $12,000. So in looking at the requirements of the grant, staff's recommending submitting an application for the purchase of two trench boxes. The overall cost would be just over $20,000, and we would apply for the maximum, the $12,000 grant, leaving a roughly $8,000 city match. And I should mention, too, that in the 2024 budget, $10,000 was approved for the purchase of a trench box, so there wouldn't be any additional city funding involved if we were successful in getting the grant. Glad to be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments?
Wasn't there a unfortunate circumstance, I guess, with a private concern that where a gentleman died in a trench here some months back?
Exactly. Over the years, there's been several tragedies like that, where workers, the trenches will cave, they don't use proper precautions, and, yeah, there have been deaths from trench cave-ins like that.
Okay.
Well, if this is accepted, it would save us a nice chunk of money, so thank you for taking a look and seeing the foresight in that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Move to approve Resolution 24-5, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 24-5. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Safety's a big concern for me, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, for sure.
Resolution 24-6.
Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 24-6, a resolution to authorize the submittal of a funding application for H2 Ohio Rivers Chloride Reduction Grant Funds through the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. Mormon, we get to see you again.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. This is another grant opportunity that we found, the goal of this grant is to help with the purchase of equipment for local communities to reduce the amount of salt that's needed during snow and ice events. The overall idea behind that would be you get less salt washing into Ohio streams and rivers, and it improves the quality of the waters. With this grant, we're proposing the purchase of new equipment, $69,000 worth of equipment. It would be for two new brine tanks at the public service garage, it'd be larger tanks, had larger capacity. The goal being that we could improve our pre-treatment capabilities to reduce the amount of salt in big events. We're also proposing the purchase of a couple of roadway... We're also proposing the purchase of a couple of roadway condition sensors, where it would provide live information as far as like, you know, pavement temperature, air temperature, stuff like that, to help us make better decisions as far as how to treat roadways in the wintertime. Again, the proposed grant would be for $69,482. There's no local match required with this, so it wouldn't be any additional city funds if we get the grant money.
From a sensor standpoint, how many sensors would you have out there?
Yeah, we're proposing two in this grant, but honestly, if the grant's not successful, something we'll probably invest in in future years anyways, but.
Okay. How many? I guess my question is, where would you put them?
Oh, they would be mounted to one of the vehicles on the roadways, where you can get live information from one of the piles.
All right, I was, that was my question. It's going to be moving around, so.
That's right.
All right, very good, okay. Anyone else have any comments?
Move to approve resolution 24-6.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 24-6. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion is passed. Liquor license. Chief.
Two of them, Danny, two of them.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I have before you this evening two separate liquor license permits. The first one is for the Sakura Sushi and Korean Cuisine LLC. We received paperwork from them, reference a, from the State of Ohio, the Division of Liquor Control, reference a new D2 permit for that business located at 3464 Pentagon Boulevard, Suite F here in Beaver Creek. All the background checks were completed on the listed applicants and shareholders, and there were no concerns for this permit request, and we are recommending the application move forward without any comment.
Move to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Okay. The second one is for, it's a new permit for a company called Thirsty Flavors LLC. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control, again, sent us notification of this request for a new C2 liquor permit for that business located at 60 Harvard Drive, Unit 958 in Beaver Creek, Ohio. Again, the background checks were completed on the listed applicant and the shareholder, and there were no concerns for this permit request. And again, we are asking it to be moved forward without comment.
Move to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ready to council time now? Last time, wait. It's council time. So tonight, we're going to start with Councilwoman Garcia.
I should have turned off my mic. Thank you so much. Not too much of an update tonight. I just want to thank everyone who's shown interest in the Veteran Banner Program. We're very excited, I'm very excited about getting that up and running. We already have 50 applications, and there are 61 slots available, so there's only less than a dozen left. So if you're interested, please reach out to the city, go ahead and take a look at our programming on the website and see what you need to do. And also, a big happy birthday to Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you.
And that's it for me. We'll get there, we'll get there. It's only January, but happy birthday.
Wow. Councilman Littrell.
I don't really have much. I just, I want to thank the city, all the workers that were out there cleaning the roads over the past week. Did a good job, man. Didn't see the vehicles, just went out there and they were clear. Went in air and they got covered, come back home, they were clear again. So I like it like that. And I would like to take this opportunity to ask anybody out there to give them room. I understand what it's like to be standing at the side of the road and how fast people go by. Got to give them room to work. That's really all I have for the night. I appreciate you.
Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, we had an opportunity to do a couple of things on Par and new establishment off of Indian Ripple. Had the honor to go over there and see the multitude of activities that are available to citizens if they wish to go in there and participate. And I just wanted to congratulate the owners and just wish them the very best. There was a nice article in the business section of the Daily News about this facility. So I encourage our citizens to, if they have the opportunity, to stop out at On Par and see what it's like. Secondly, again, I mentioned earlier, this last Saturday, I had an opportunity to hear Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Glenn Doer speak on the Middle East issues at our church, did a fantastic job, but once again, presented the very, very complicated picture that we're facing in the Middle East. I just want to, again, congratulate Councilmember Doer for her excellent job at presenting the, a very difficult situation. Also, I would agree with Councilmember Garcia on the banner program. Nice article in the paper on it, and so happy to hear the number of applications that have been submitted for consideration. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Likewise, I'd like to wish Vice Mayor Bales a very happy birthday.
Ooh, thank you.
It's wonderful, and I'd like to echo the comments of Councilman Littrell, to thank the road crews and the excellent work, very quick work as well there. I would like to, in line with Councilman Curran, thank Patterson Park Church for hosting me at the men's breakfast and the opportunity to speak, always a blessing, and thank you to Pastor Joe Godwin as well for the warm welcome, and many others. And I also had a chance to address the St. Leonard Community in Centerville, Ohio, on the U.S. foreign policy this year, and thankful for a number of Beaver Creek residents who came out and purposely said hello to me at the conclusion of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since a couple of my colleagues have mentioned it today, I'm happy to say that I'm 25 years old today.
Which anniversary?
Times a couple. Anyway, thank you very much. I would, too, like to thank the Public Service Department for clearing the snow very efficiently. They did a great job. I also like to thank Katie for all of the press we've been getting in the last couple of weeks, that have hit the newspaper, and just really happy to have you on board and to see all of the positive publicity that the city's been getting. So thank you. And then before we meet again, I will be attending the Ohio Parks and Recreation Conference in Sandusky week after next, and I'll give you a full report when I return. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. First of all, I just, our prayers go out to Councilwoman Schwartz. She lost her grandmother today, so we, all our prayers are with her as she deals with that. And I, too, wanted to say happy birthday to Vice Mayor Bales.
Good day.
It is a good day, so. I was able to attend the Greater Dayton Mayors and Managers' monthly meeting with City Manager Landrum. It was my first meeting. It was a good opportunity to get together with a lot of mayors and managers from around the area. It's, I think that's going to be a good program to be a part of. I got to spend the weekend at the high school, working as a stage manager for the Beaver Creek High School Friends Show Choir for too long a period of time. It was a long weekend, that's my 17th year doing that, but it's amazing the amount of talent these young kids have out there. It's just, I'm in awe of it sometimes, just to watch them go out there, especially the Friends Show Choir, because they had to work all day Friday, all day Saturday, and then perform at 11:30 Saturday night.
Gee.
So, yeah, how they do it, I don't know. I, too, want to thank the street department for what they did on Friday. I was out at 7:30 in the morning, and all the roads were cleared, and it was amazing. I just, you know, saw the truckers out there, tried to wave at them and say thank you, but we really appreciate what they did. And Katie, were you the one that did the video? Were you riding along? I attended the President's Club of Dayton for a lecture on the upcoming total eclipse that will occur April 8th. It's going to start at 1:53 PM with totality beginning at 3:09 PM, lasting for approximately two and a half minutes here. If you don't have your glasses yet, you might want to get them. This is the first total eclipse that we've had in this area in 1,036 years, and the next total eclipse in this area will be 1,000-plus years from now. So if you miss this one, you probably aren't going to see the next one. Also got to attend the assumption of command for the U.S. Air Force Life Cycle Management Center when Lieutenant General Donna Shipton was assumed command. That was quite an event, it was good to see that. I, too, is at Chamberlain's at On Par. I highly recommend people going out to try that. It's a good opportunity, there's something in there for everybody. You know, there's duck pin bowling, miniature golf, darts, I mean, all kinds of things. This past Saturday, I had the opportunity to go to Harbor Chase. I was invited over there for a lady's 104th birthday. That was quite an event. The news was there, and I was able to present her with a proclamation from the city and one of my coins, and it was a really, really fun event to go do that. Then I also attended a fundraiser for Violence Free Futures this past Saturday. It's another great organization that I'm proud to be a board member of, along with Vice Mayor Bales. It's one of those things that you really don't want to see it in your community, but you're really glad it's there because of what they do. So I, kudos to them. And that's all I had. City Manager.
Happy birthday, Vice Mayor Bales. You're in good company. We've had a birthday each week in the city manager's office, so we've been celebrating every week this month so far. So January, you're in good company, but happy birthday. Tonight, just be aware early in the morning sometime, there is expected some ice. So as it said, I'm sure the crews will be out spreading some salt and doing their best, but ice is ice, so please be safe, and please do give the guys some space with the trucks. It may be a very slick morning ahead. Tonight, as mentioned, the Veterans Program, it has really, we ask Engineering Office, Amy is handling the applications, and we asked her how it was going, and she literally was almost teared up of how excited people are calling and talking and so glad, and she's like, it's really been like a blessing that these people are so excited. So that was kind of really neat to hear that aspect. So that's good. Yes, please, we only have a certain number of poles this year. This is our, you know, this is our first run, so we didn't want to do too many to know what we're doing, how to do it, how it works, get the initial poles mounted. We haven't done that yet. So there's a lot of things to work out, and the printing of the banners, and so this is the trial run for this, and that's why we only had 61. And we'll see according to the demand and everything else, and how everything works, whether to expand it next year or not. But people are excited, and please check out our website. It is up there easily by just clicking beaver creek ohio.gov/veteran, and it will come up for you. Or call City Hall if you have any questions. Boards and Commissions, we are accepting Boards and Commissions' applications for all the different boards and commissions. You can check our website for the information and for the application, but the application deadline is February 9th, because the plan is the last meeting in February, is for City Council to appoint the vacancies of, and replacements of the board members at that point in time. So if you're interested in one of the boards, please apply. You can go to our website, Beaver Creek, Ohio, and Boards and Commissions, and see the applications. It is build a snowman. There's a little bit of snow, you may have to scalp your whole yard to get enough for a snowman, I'm not sure.
Better hurry up.
Better hurry up, yeah. Hey, it'll pack good if that rain comes. But my intuition tells me we're going to have more chances of snow, so we do have February 29th is our program runs until, but when there is time to build snowmen, you'll see it on our Facebook page, take pictures, and you'll be, even if it's next week and you don't, you still have till February 29th to post the pictures during the season, the snow season, and the winner will win a prize for the family. So check that out. And of course, we're always hiring police officers, good police officers, we have communications operators as well. And I know it is January, but the positions that we will have in golf parks and recreations on the seasonals are always a need, so we'll probably, we'll go look at how we usually need about 80 seasonal positions, so we'll see how many we can get this year. Info, go to our website, front of it, and you'll see employment. Click on there, and you can see our jobs. Other than that, be safe out on the roads, and that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. I did want to thank Councilwoman Garcia for bringing that banner program to us. I think it's been a big event. A lot of people that I've talked with have been really excited about it, so thank you for that. Citizen comments. This is the time we set aside for citizens to come up and address council on any topic that you'd like for three minutes. You can upstate your name and your address.
My name's Toni Wright, 434 Grand Vista Drive. I didn't plan on doing this, but I grew up in Beaver Creek. My husband and I and our kids moved to Beaver Creek in 83, and I graduated from Beaver Creek, so did my husband. Two of my kids graduated from Beaver Creek, two of my grandkids are in Beaver Creek schools. And I know that small farms, it's just really hard to keep up, and I understand that they want to sell their property, and they have a right to do that and make as much money as they can. And, you know, I just bless them for that, but I'm also concerned, being around Beaver Creek, knowing many people in Beaver Creek, most everyone I talk to is just very concerned about all of the houses going up. And so not only is there a section, but you have, they're really close together, so that's more houses. And that's affecting our schools, and it's affecting our community, it's affecting the prices. And being in the retirement now section of life, that makes it much harder for us. But I'm also concerned about the young families and the kids and the schools, and how hard that is. And I just keep hoping and praying that City Council, Township Trustees, the Board of Zoning Appeals, that all of you are thinking about all of those things, that building up a bigger community, filling up all of the space in our community, is not what the majority of the people want. And I know that it's very hard to balance out all of those things, and I do thank you for all of the work that you do, and I know that most of you, because I know a couple of you, some of you more than others, and I know you care, and I appreciate that, and I thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else? I guess I will close the citizen comments portion, and I'm looking for a motion.
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you, we are adjourned.